Okay. Looks like we are at the top of the hour, so we're gonna go ahead and get started with the Love and Faith Christian Fellowship Health and Wellness Town Hall. And I'd like to start off by saying good morning to everyone. And I'd like to thank everyone for joining us with the Love and Faith Christian Fellowship Health and Wellness Town Hall. Everyone has been muted upon injury. And you'll remain muted until we get to the live question of the presentation, just so that we can minimize distractions for others. And this town hall is being recorded. But before we get started, I wanted to ask Dr. Jerry Powell, please open us in prayer.
Oh God, we just, uh, thank you. We love you. We thank you for this opportunity to educate and equip your people, Father. You said when two or three are gathered in your name that you would be in the midst, Father. We pray that you have your way right now on this meeting, Father. We ask that you just bring you glory and honor, uh, whatever is said and was done, Father. Uh, we pray for healing right now for, um, panelists or, or participants who are dealing with family members who have had COVID or dealt with COVID. Father, we ask for healing on the family members or themselves, Father. We just pray over any type of, uh, of sickness, Father, hypertension, diabetes, heart attack, whatever, Father. We ask for healing right now because we know that you are the one that have, has the power to do that, Father. Father, we ask that you, um, just let the, uh, meeting, uh, be clear, Father. Let, uh, words of wisdom, uh, be released, Father. We ask also that hope and encouragement, um, be released, Father. And Father, we, again, we thank you. We thank you for this opportunity to educate and equip. And again, have your way. In our son Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Dr. Powell, for sharing. So, did you want to say anything about that town hall before we get started, Dr. Powell?
Well, um, this is our, our first town hall ever, and again, uh, navigating through, um, COVID is a, is a journey, a new journey for everyone. We're all having to adapt. So I asked you to just be patient with us as we go through, uh, and use the Zoom meeting, um, to educate and equip and, uh, and again, our goal is that we can, uh, uh, answer your questions and, uh, so that you can leave with a sense of hope and encouragement. So we hope you enjoy. Uh, just sit back and, uh, we have a lot of great panelists that are gonna educate you and, and, uh, share a lot of knowledge. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, let's get right into the information. We have joining us today Kristin Hicks, Dr. Kristin Hicks, and she's an outpatient internist at the Kernsfield, um, at Veterans Administration.
Good morning. Good morning, everyone.
Thank you. Next, we have Dr. Nia White. She's a licensed clinical social worker and owner of Spirit Counseling and Consulting, P L L C.
Good morning.
Thank you. Next, we have Dr. Pamela Warner. She's a pediatrician at ABC Pediatrics of Greensboro, where she has been in practice for 21 years.
Good morning.
And finally, uh, well, not finally. Next, we have Dr. Celeste Wallace. She's a pediatrician at Wake Forest Health Network in Greensboro, North Carolina.
Good morning.
And finally, last but not least, Dr. Jerry Powell, who is a hospitalist at Forsyth Medical Center in Winston-Salem, North Carolina.
Good morning.
Thank you all panelists for saying good morning. We're gonna go ahead and get started with information that's gonna be shared, by Dr. Kristin Hicks.
Right, there we go. Okay, so good morning again, everyone. Um, for my opening topic, uh, this morning, I'd say the Holy Spirit gave me the following. It was coming from Second Kings, Chapter 5, when he talked about naming, um, being healed of leprosy and how when he presented to Elijah, he was expecting Elijah to do something great and fantastic. And what he told him to do was go and wash himself seven times and he would be clean and he wasn't satisfied with that. And it made me reflect on how we have, I have encountered quite a few patients who are very unwilling to wear their masks. They don't see the utility of it. They don't see why it's the right thing to do. And it just made me think that how simple it is for us to do that, to help ourselves and help others. But if we were to tell them that they had to go and walk around the world five times, then maybe that would be something more acceptable. But when it's something simple that we can do to help each other out, we seem to be more resistant to it. But sometimes the things that the Lord wants us to do to help ourselves and help each other really is right there in our hands and we really can do it and make a bigger impact than we may, than it may seem. That's about it.
Thank you, Kristin, for sharing, and that is so true as we face the pandemic that continues to, uh, numbers and cases that continue to rise and yet people are still resistant to even putting on a mask. So, thank you for sharing that. Um, how about Dr. Nia White?
Morning, everybody. Uh, so I just wanna share a little bit about COVID-19 and dealing with loss and depression. A lot of times, whenever we think of loss, we're thinking of it in terms of physical death. And we certainly know that there has been a high number of physical deaths this year. However, loss is represented in many variations. Uh, we have experienced probably a loss of a routine, a loss of outlets, a loss of corporate worship, um, maybe even loss in terms of changes of relationships. And with loss, um, the natural response to that is grief and depression. And I can personally speak to that because I have been, um, going through and growing through a depression since September. And what I'm learning and what the Holy Spirit is showing me is that, um, we're not in heaven yet. We are in this world and there's not a vaccine for your emotions. And so even as believers, we can be impacted by, um, just, you know, the changes going on around us. And so with that being said, um, you know, A, just first of all acknowledging the fact that depression is real. It is real. Um, there are many examples in the Bible of individuals that have experienced depression. Um, B, once we acknowledge that depression is real, being transparent with that. Someone asks you how you're doing, letting them know, like, hey, I've been feeling a little sad and this sadness is lingering. I just can't seem to shake it. Hey, I've had, um, some really bad thoughts. As a matter of fact, for myself, I was having suicidal thoughts, which I never encountered in my life. And so being transparent in that. And then three, being intentional because you're not gonna wake up the next day and your depression or your negative thoughts or even coronavirus is just gonna go away. You have to be intentional in terms of getting up, be intentional in terms of connecting with your loved ones, be intentional in terms of checking on people, be intentional in terms of practicing and implementing those things that we know how to do.
Thank you for sharing. Thank you for sharing, Dr. Nia and Dr. Nia White. I wanna, I wanna call her Dr. Nia. Um, but, um, that's so important and we, we appreciate you sharing that vulnerability so that others know it's okay to share your emotions whenever you may be having struggles. Thank you so much. Dr. Pamela Warner.
Good morning again. Um, the topic I wanted to discuss, uh, since I'm a pediatrician, is in regards to children, well, infants and children and their well visits and specifically staying up to date, uh, during this timeframe on their vaccines. Uh, the most important timeframe, and I know for those of you who have younger ones or you're, um, or you remember, it seemed like you were in the office every two to three months, the first two years of life, and you were. Uh, because, you know, the development needed to be checked and vaccines needed to be given. So what we're tru- really trying to stress is the importance of continuing to get those vaccines because we already have a pandemic for one virus that we're trying to, uh, come up with a vaccine for and we don't need to bring back, um, diseases that have already been combated or we, we have relatively under control with vaccines. So the key thing for parents at this time is definitely keeping your visits. And the offices have made accommodations and changes, um, to, to keep everyone safe. Because the key thing is they definitely wanna keep you and your family safe. And we also have to keep ourselves safe because if we don't, then we can't, we can't take care of you. Um, for, for myself, um, I've been in practice 21 years and in terms of seeing, uh, children and infants, I've always done well visits first thing in the morning, first thing in the afternoon, and we continue to do that. And I, I believe most offices do that. And I do know a lot have gone to putting larger gaps in between, uh, the well visits versus the sick visits or just, uh, specifically doing well visits first thing in the morning, um, and sick visits in the afternoon so that there's no cross-contamination and there's no risk of you contracting, um, COVID-19 while you're in your physician's office. Um, the key points, like I said, is for the children from definitely birth to two years of age because there are vaccines pretty much every two to three month, uh, every two to three months during those years. Um, and then the next time, there are no vaccines at three, but you still wanna have yearly checkups. And then again, at four and five for children entering pre-K and kindergarten. And even though those kids are remote learning, there is still the requirement for their vaccines to be up to date. Uh, the dates have been pushed back. When the kids started school in August, you had a month to get them, so you had until September 30th. Uh, the date has been pushed back again. I, I believe it's December 30th is the most recent in terms of vaccines needing to be up to date. And then the school nurses have until February to get those reports into the state. So even for kids who are doing virtual academy, uh, the key points is your pre-K children, your kindergarten children need to have their vaccines for school, even if they stay home the entire year. Uh, your seventh graders need to have their T-DAP and their Minactra vaccine. Even if they're doing virtual academy the entire year, they have to have those vaccines, um, to, to be counted as students. And then your 17-year-olds, um, be it a junior or a senior, definitely by senior year. And that one is new this year in terms of having the second, um, Minijacapal or Minactra or Minbio vaccine. Um, so I'm sure plenty of parents have gotten notices in regards to those vaccines. So, um, the vaccines can be done at well visits and they can be done at nurse-only visits. You don't necessarily have to have a checkup. If you say, hey, I just want the vaccine. I wanna get in and get out. But you, you, you can't be told you have to have a visit. You can have a visit specifically for a vaccine. So if that's what you need, then, you know, that's what needs to be done. Um, but like I said, um, the key thing is staying up to date on the vaccines and staying up to date on your chronic, for kids who have chronic conditions. What I've noticed is a lot of my patients who have asthma and allergies aren't needing their medications right now. And I've told families, it is fine to be off of them because the exposure isn't there. But definitely check with your child's pediatrician or family medicine doctor before you decide to do that. Um, and that's the information that I have to share.
Thank you, Dr. Warner. I think that a lot of focus has been on COVID and they may forget about those routine vaccines or they may not be hearing about them as much. You know, the news will normally bring up that type of information. So thank you again for, uh, reminding us. We still have to continue on with the normal things in life as well. Okay, next we have, uh, Dr. Celeste Wallace.
Good morning again. Um, I just wanted to touch briefly on, um, kind of, COVID has kind of taken our routine, our, our schedules out of, out of whack. It's disrupted our normal, our normal life and our normal routines. Um, and so this has really brought disruption to the lives of, um, the pediatric population, including and the adult population. Um, so what I wanna talk about is getting some familiarity back into your household. So developing new routines and new schedules for the family and for, for the children especially. Key areas where you want to develop routine is the wake-sleep schedule, the schoolwork schedule, the playtime schedule, the exercise schedule, the eating schedule, and the family schedule. The wake-sleep schedule is very important. We know sleep is important for great physical health, great mental health. Um, and so we need to get back to a routine, back to a, a bedtime and the time that we wake up in the morning. Um, the children have been, um, staying up way late. One o'clock, two o'clock. Some don't even go to sleep until the morning. And then that means, of course, they're not doing their virtual learning the way that they're supposed to. So to develop a, a, to get back to a regular sleep time and wake-up time in the mornings, letting the children know what their wake and sleep times are so that they'll be aware and prepare for sleep time and to prepare for wake time by setting their alarm clocks or their phones to wake them up. The other thing that's important is their schoolwork schedule to maybe develop a calendar, a schedule where they can visualize what time they should log on, what time are the separate subjects that they have, um, the time of their breaks, the time where school ends, um, something that they can visually see so that they'll know what they're doing for that day. Playtime. Playtime is very important and it should be scheduled in. Playtime depends on how old your child is. If you have a toddler, for them to play with their toys. If you have older children, of course, they wanna do their video games, but that needs to be scheduled. And it needs to be, especially with the, the video games, it needs to be limited. Um, it shouldn't be an all-day thing, um, that they're doing. Um, and they should be aware of the times that they are allowed to do their video games or they are, are allowed to play. Uh, with school being out, people have not been able to do their organized sports or their organized dance. And so exercise has really taken a backseat. Uh, we have seen, I've seen my patients gain 20 to 25 pounds um, since COVID has started. And that's the majority of my patients. That's what I've seen. And so we really, really need to get back to developing a schedule for exercise. Um, whether it's indoor exercise or outdoor exercise. I know in the beginning of the pandemic, some people were scared to go outside. Uh, but we are more educated now. We know that going outside is helpful. Um, so definitely, um, developing an exercise schedule. There's tons of things on YouTube and different apps where you can, um, do, um, specific exercises. If you can't figure out what to do on your own, there's a lot of help out there. Uh, one app that I've, um, recommended to my patients a lot is something called FitOn, F-I-T-O-N. I think that has been helpful. Uh, eating schedule. Oh my goodness. The kids have been eating whatever they want, whenever they want. And that's why they've gained the 20 to 25 pounds. So letting them know when they should eat, what they should eat, not having too much junk food in the house. High-calorie junk food has led to the 20 to 25-pound weight gain that I've seen among 80% of my patients. Uh, so we need to, to work on that. And then a family schedule, family time. Hopefully, you know, the family time is also during playtime and during eating time and during exercise time. But if it's not, then you need to make sure you're adding in that time, um, so that you are, are spending time with the family and, and talking with your children and seeing what's going on in their minds um, and how they're feeling about their new familiar or their new routines. And, you know, once you've developed these schedules and the kids get used to it, the household gets used to it, it's no longer the new schedule, the new routine. It's just what you do. Um, and as we know, people have been waiting to get back to the old. We need to stop waiting and just get, get with what we have going on right now.
Thank you, Dr. Wallace. That's so true. We don't know when these things, when things are gonna get back to quote "normal." So let's just make this our new normal. Great, thank you. And finally, Dr. Jerry Powell.
Good morning again. Um, what I'm gonna talk about this morning is just, uh, being good stewards, uh, of our health. Um, kind of what we've noticed in the hospital lately is that, uh, everybody's really focused on, just like the pediatricians have said, everybody's kind of focused on the coronavirus and they're not taking care of their, uh, their regular health needs. Uh, we're seeing people come in and they're waiting because they don't wanna come in the hospital because they don't wanna be exposed to Corona. They're waiting longer to come in for strokes and they're missing the opportunity for TPA and adventure and interventions to help stroke. They're coming in later for their heart attacks and so they have more, uh, muscle tissue dying and the heart attacks are, are worse and it's taking longer to recover. Our COPD patients don't wanna come in, but you have to take care of those needs. And the hospital is, is, uh, is safe, so you can still come in and they, they try to separate out Corona patients from everyone else as much as, uh, as possible. Um, so the thing is, is make sure you keep your routine visits, take your medications, uh, regularly because we need good help. So why do we need good help? Uh, we need good health so we can minister to our families, um, so we can work. Um, it allows us to focus on and complete the purpose that God has, uh, placed us here for. So good health goes hand in hand with our, our spiritual health. So what can we do, um, to, I guess, uh, equip ourselves and, uh, as we're waiting for a cure that, uh, or a vaccine that hopefully is out now and, and hopefully and prayerfully that it'll work. So what I've done is just because we had a large group in the, uh, Daniel Plan, I'm gonna kind of review some of the five essentials of, uh, of good health is what I'm gonna do. So faith is, is the first one. Faith is the assurance that things, uh, revealed and promised in the Word are true, even though we haven't seen them. And, and we're, we believe that all those things will come to pass that we believe and we pray for and that are in, in the Word. Um, and God, and we know that all, in Romans 8:28, he said that all things, um, will work out for the good of those who love the God, the Lord, and call it according to His purpose. So again, we have to take care of our health. So faith is the first thing. So we gotta get into our Word on a daily basis, um, because that's gonna be our foundation and that's gonna be our encouragement. Um, so faith is an important part of our health. So make sure you listen to whoever your pastor is on a regular basis, reading on a regular basis, the Word and praying. And the second thing we have in Daniel Plan is food. Um, in 1 Corinthians 10:31, it says, uh, "Whether, whatever you eat or drink or do, we all do it for the glory of God." So remember what we're, we're eating, um, because I, I have, uh, I was listening to Dr. Um, Wallace talk about the kids and eating and snacking. Uh, I am definitely, uh, guilty of, of, of that. And so, um, so we really had to be careful what we put in our mouth. So, um, we gotta remember foods aren't just calories and energy. Uh, food actually has an, has instructions. Uh, it can tell our body to be sick. If you're eating a lot of sweets, it increases inflammation. It makes it harder to fight the flu and the coronavirus. Um, uh, so the thing is, we gotta increase those fresh fruits and vegetables and, and decreased amount of snacks in the house and, and change out for the alternatives. If you eat meat, try to eat organic or free-range, uh, uh, meat. So make sure we read those food labels and avoid, uh, high fructose corn syrup, trans fats, and MSG. The third essential in the Daniel Plan was exercise. So the American Heart Association, they recommend 50 minutes of moderate exercise a week or 75 minutes of vigorous exercise a week. And I remember in the Daniel Plan, we would always say, "Do what you like." It, it, it is, if it's walking, that's fine. If it's, uh, getting up, putting on praise music and dancing, do that. Uh, just do something, uh, to keep those muscles strong, keep your core strength. Um, because those are important as we go through our day to, uh, prevent energy, in, uh, injuries. And then at the same time, it helps us, uh, be strong enough to minister to others. And then the fourth thing is, uh, essential was focus. If you, um, read Philippians 4:8, it talks about whatever is true, what is noble, whatever is right, whatever is pure, whatever is lovely, and whatever is admirable. If anything is excellent praise, we're gonna think about those things. So, um, like Dr. White said, our mental health is so important. Um, because if your mental health isn't well, it's hard to focus on the spiritual. It's hard to focus on, on, on the physical of exercise and trying to eating well. Things just kind of, uh, kind of go downhill and we don't take care of our mental health. So just remember, renew your mind every day through prayer, reading the Word, and meditation on a daily basis. And I think someone already said it, get plenty of rest. Try to get plenty of, uh, sleep because what'll happen is, is people are working from home and they're on the computer for longer hours and, uh, their day and days and nights are mixed up. So it's important to get plenty of rest. And again, someone said, I don't know who said, "Be intentional," but be intentional about your schedule. Then the last thing on, um, uh, essential in the Daniel Plan was friends. Uh, we need friends for accountability, encouragement. And the thing is, we're not with others as much as we have been since COVID. It kind of changed things. But we can still stay connected using FaceTime and Skype, Zoom, Facebook, and even old dinosaurs like me can still write letters. Um, so we gotta stay engaged and in contact with each other. So I just wanted to share the scripture Ecclesiastes 4:9 through 10 with you is that two are better than one because they have a good return for their labor. If either them falls down, one can help the other up. But pity one who falls and has no one to help, uh, help them up. So that's my part today, but I had to use some scriptures today and I, I wanna share why. Is that, you know, research and science can be flawed because it's done by man. And what we tell you today may change tomorrow, uh, depending on who the researchers are. But I just want you to know the principles and the Word of God are never changing. They're steadfast. They stood, stood the, the test of time. And so, yes, I'm a doctor. I, I believe in, 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 in the science, but my foundation and my faith is in the Word of God and the principles that are in it.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Dr. Powell, for sharing that with us and reminding us how key all of those essentials are. Well, we had some questions submitted as people registered for Eventbrite. And I wanted to start off with Dr. Hicks, seeing if she could help out with one of these questions. And the question is, how long does it take for the body to be rid of the coronavirus?
Okay, well, I found some information. Um, it says, "For those who are hospitalized, the time for you to be free of your symptoms may be as short to S5 to eight days. But for those who have more severe symptoms, it may take up to a full 21 days or three weeks." Um, and then even those who are sicker, maybe those who've been on the ventilator, on the breathing machine, they may actually take up to six weeks to get through the complete virus and feel more like their normal selves. For those who were, um, on the outpatient setting that did not need hospitalization, they may also have gotten better within seven to 12 days. But they also seem to have a longer duration of their symptoms. It said that those who had a milder onset of the symptoms of the COVID virus seem to have those symptoms longer than those who had a severe onset of symptoms. They didn't explain why, but that was one of the findings that some research has shown so far. So, um, I guess the main thing is, is as short as five days and as long as maybe six weeks before you feel like you're back to your normal self.
Thank you, um, Dr. Hicks, for sharing that. Um, so we, you, you just never know. It could be anywhere from five to six weeks to, to clear your.
And for my adult patients, that's pretty standard, even for pneumonia. We tell patients that it may be up to six weeks before you really feel like you're completely back to where you were before the illness took place. So this is about, it's about routine.
Okay, thank you. And, um, Dr. Nia White, uh, we had a question to come in that says, um, "What kind of mental health issues do I need to worry about for my children?"
Such a good question. So we're definitely seeing an increase in anxiety and depression. So anxiety basically is rooted in fear, right? Anxiety is rooted in fear and a lot of times it really manifests, um, related to things that are out of our control. And so because COVID-19 has been, um, really just disruptive to our regular schedule. um, I think children are feeling, gosh, you know, will I be able to have a regular graduation? Will I be able to, um, you know, still be prepared for college in the way that I need to be? Will I receive a scholarship if I'm not playing the minutes that I'm accustomed to? Will I be able to go to prom? I mean, even things that we may think are trivial, those are things that, um, really plague the hearts and the minds of people, particularly our children. And we have to remember that the frontal lobe of their brain is not fully developed. Meaning their ability to kind of reason and think through that stuff is going to be a little delayed. Um, so that's why they could have like those overly emotional reactions. So I think, um, people in general, our children are dealing with anxiety. I believe they're also dealing with depression because their typical normal outlets have probably been diminished in a significant way. Now you may be thinking, my child just scrolls on that phone all day. So what's the difference? But there is a difference between whenever we are connected, when we're together, or even if they are still able to be with friends, um, you know, in a kind of monitored way. It's like people are again, um, reinforcing being distant and things of that nature. And so, um, I would definitely say those are things to be mindful of. And, um, really I just want to encourage you, pay attention to your children. Don't let them just stay in a room and you don't go knock on the door. As a matter of fact, it's your house. So just go in the room. Let them know you're coming in to see what they're doing, you know? Um, they have these earphones in. Figure out who they're talking to and what they're listening to. And if you just notice changes, like for example, we're all in the house. So, you know, like I know for me, you know, I'm walking around in t-shirts and stuff. You notice your child is walking around a bunch of hoodies, long sleeve, um, shirts and stuff. You don't want to overlook that, right? Like, you know, you want to say like, hey, are you cold? You know what I mean? Because sometimes, um, that's an indication of self-harm, which is whenever individuals, you know, cut themselves or do injury to themselves. And it's not always related to being suicidal. Many times it's related to an individual is trying to, to release their stress or their pain. So I think one thing you're going to hear me say over and over again today is be intentional. Um, so yes, I think our children are dealing with anxiety, depression, and, um, just be intentional and checking in.
Thank you. That's so much. Thank you for sharing some of those signs that we need to be looking for, Dr. Neo White. Um, Dr. Warner, if you could, um, answer the following question and it's, um, you know, that the FDA has finally approved the COVID vaccine from Pfizer. And they're asking, should children get the COVID vaccine? And the second part of that question is, would a sixteen-year-old be a child or an adult in relationship to getting the vaccine?
Okay, the vaccine that was approved last night, excuse me, there's about one, two, three, four, I believe, four companies that are working on vaccines. So the one that was approved last night was, uh, uh, vaccine by Pfizer and BioNTech. Um, vaccine. So theirs is the only study that does have kids down to twelve years of age. But the vaccine has only been approved for sixteen years of age and above. Um, for, there is the pedi, one of the larger pediatric societies in, uh, the United States or sort of internationally is the American Academy of Pediatrics. And so the biggest issue that the American Academy of Pediatrics has in regards to any of the vaccines is they feel like more children need to be added to the vac, to the vaccine trials to see what the side effects are going to be and what the efficacy is going to be. Because the vaccine that was approved the last night, um, they had forty thousand people, excuse me, in the trial, but they only had two hundred and eighty-three adolescents aged sixteen to seventeen. So they really feel like there needs to be more numbers, more kids included. Um, I do know Johnson and Johnson, which is, and Jensen is their pharmaceutical arm. Uh, Johnson and Johnson, I believe, does have numbers going down lower. But for right now, the vaccines that are, the one that, that has been approved and the next one that may be approved, the youngest age right now is sixteen years of age. Um, and tho- those numbers are small. So it's, i- i- it's a matter of weighing benefits versus the risk. Uh, the side effects for the vaccines have been similar to what you see with the vaccines that, uh, children and adults already get. Injection site reactions, fatigue, headache, uh, muscle pain, um, some joint pain. But the, the biggest concern that people have, and I guess the one I'll use is the flu vaccine. People always say, no, I'm not getting the flu vaccine because the year I got the flu, I got the flu. So what people don't understand is the timeframe it takes to build up antibodies to, to any vaccine. So for the flu vaccine, it takes about two weeks to build up antibodies to whatever strains are in that particular vaccine. And I always try and explain to parents is the strains change every year. The scientists, when they're making the vaccines, try to get it right every year. Sometimes they miss. So, excuse me, you may have strains of vaccine that are going around that the vaccine does not cover. Um, and you may have already been exposed when you get your vaccine. So the key thing with the vaccine that is out now is it's a messenger RNA vaccine. So really there is, if you are given this vaccine, the way it's developed, you really should not get COVID nineteen from the vaccine. They didn't see any of that with the vaccines. Um, so right now, there's, there are not any vaccines available for kids. But like I said, the one that was approved, it does start at sixteen and up. And what they found is the teenagers are acting like the adults in regards to symptoms and diseases. The younger kids between ten and twelve, less than ten and twelve years of age, definitely the younger ones are having very minimal symptoms. Um, and even for, take your daily over-the-counter medicines such as Tylenol, um, Advil, Motrin, your cold medicines. Most of those studies are done, kids are, it starts at twelve years of age, sort of it's twelve years of age and adult. So, excuse me, so right now, no COVID nineteen for vaccine, for, uh, vaccine for kids. But sixteen and above is there, but the American Academy of Pediatrics really would like to see larger numbers in the trials just to see, you know, what efficacy there is, um, and what the benefits are going to be.
Thank you, Dr. Warner. We appreciate that information. So, um, Dr. Wallace, I have an interesting question for you. And they wanted you to please explain COVID toes.
So COVID, COVID toes is actually, they can actually occur in the fingers too, but mostly, um, in the toes. It's a discoloration or swelling of the toes or the fingertips. Um, brown, purple, red, pink. So in darker color skin, you may see more darker looking toes or fingertips than normal. Uh, maybe some purple or brown spots on the palms or soles of the toes. Um, lighter color skin, you'll see pink or red, um, swollen. It can be itchy. It can be painful. Um, sometimes there can be pus underneath the skin. Um, it, it's usually caused by, um, the very small blood vessels in the toes or in the fingers tightening or constricting. And so the blood is not able to get to the area the way that it's supposed to. So it causes the toes and the fingers to change colors. Um, and there's two theories about COVID toes. Um, whether it's the virus that actually causes, um, this to happen, um, the coronavirus causing it to happen, or, uh, what they call the quarantine lifestyle. Um, meaning that, uh, people, children have been walking around their house barefoot um, on cold floors, um, or sitting more or laying more. Um, and so causing the blood not to circulate, um, through the toes, um, the way they normally would if the toes were kept warm in socks and shoes instead of cold floors uh, or the virus. And so they're not sure from the, the articles that I read. But if you have that on your toes, if your child has that on their toes, you need to call your doctor.
Thank you, Dr. Wallace. All the more reason for us to get up and keep moving to, to eliminate that. Thank you. And, um, Dr. Powell, we have a question that asked about the vaccine. And they wanted to know what percentage of African-Americans have been included in the vaccine trials?
Uh, that's a good question. And actually, it wasn't, uh, included. It's probably volunteered to participate is probably a better angle to look at it. Um, when you look at the studies, ninety-one percent of the, uh, the volunteers were Caucasian. Uh, nine percent were blacks, Latinx, Native American, uh, and islanders. And about three percent, uh, the ones that volunteered were, uh, out of that nine percent were African-American. So we had, um, very little volunteers, uh, within the COVID trials. And again, uh, there are historical reasons why. Um, and, and, and again, it's trust of the medical system and research. And if you go back and, uh, think about the Tuskegee experiment with syphilis and, um, there was a, um, uh, um, lady named Henrietta Lack that actually had cervical cancer. And after she died, they kept her cells and they used her cell to finally found treatment for cervical cancer. And then if you, um, there was another case that, uh, they referred to a lot too, is this guy named Dr. Sims in Alabama. Uh, in the eighteen hundreds, he would, uh, do, um, he actually came up with the way to fix, um, uh, a procedure. I mean, a complication of, of having kids. And that was, uh, it's called a fistula. You actually have a connection between the bladder and the vagina. And he experimented on a bunch of women slaves without anesthesia, up to thirty times per, per, per slave. And, and so there's a lot of reason of distrust of the medical, uh, system. But I think, you know, people like myself and other panelists, uh, we have to do our research and then we can encourage, um, uh, us to participate in, in, uh, in, in trials and that kind of thing. But, uh, um, but yeah, unfortunately it was just three percent. And again, I, I would love to see more, um, uh, because I think it, it can affect races uh, differently. And, uh, so unfortunately just three percent.
Thank you, Dr. Powell. Um, speaking of, of ways that you can, that the, you can have different factors to affect COVID differently, um, Dr. Hicks, does one's blood type have anything to do with a person being asymptomatic or more vulnerable to COVID?
There have been some studies that show that those who have type O blood type are less vulnerable to the virus or maybe have, um, less severe symptoms or maybe a shorter duration of their symptoms. While there are other studies that say that those who have type A blood have a more severe illness or more vulnerable to getting sick or maybe have a longer duration of the illness. But the end of it is, there are no studies that specifically say that any particular blood type is going to be definitely less likely to get it or more likely to get it. But there are some findings that mean, lead to those two trends. Um, overall, there is very little in medicine that I do and maybe other panels that could say day to day that really depends on your blood type. That really is only a factor if you're needing a blood transfusion. If you're donating blood or maybe during pregnancy, make sure there's not going to be a complication during pregnancy. If the mother and the developing baby have a different type of blood or different, um, RH positivity. But for your day-to-day healthcare, that's not something that is really of a great focus. And there's nothing with the coronavirus at this time that focuses on your blood type to determine if you do or are not going to get sick and what treatment you're going to receive. It's not a factor at this time. And I don't anticipate that it's going to be a big factor in the future.
Thank you, Dr. Hicks. That's an interesting question though. Thank you. So, um, Dr. White, uh, we have questions submitted and they wanted to know, why do we experience such strong cravings for tasty and unhealthy foods where we're not feeling well mentally?
Yeah. So I think, um, a lot of that answer is just related to our brain and that there are dopamine receptors in our brain that, uh, trigger like a high or a rush. And we get that, right? People can, um, get that feeling from using illicit drugs. But you can also get that feeling from foods that you eat. And so the term comfort food, it has some validity to it. Or the term sugar high has validity to it. And so when you eat those foods, um, like that reward center in your brain, it is triggered and you do feel better momentarily. So I think that just, that just like having, um, that kind of, that kind of direct gratification um, is something and, you know, us just knowing that, hey, I can temporarily kind of ease this discomfort is related to that. Um, because one of the things about human nature, we don't like pain. And many times we want to avoid pain. And so a lot of times we're searching for whatever is, um, most immediately available to numb or dull that pain. But I really want to encourage us today to acknowledge and address our pain. Even, even if it's a messy pain that you've never addressed in your life. Because those short-term attempts to maybe go and grab that donut or grab that whole dozen donuts or whatever the case may be, is going to, um, create an additional issue, right? Um, that's going to be impacting you in another way. Um, and so, yeah, I would say, I think the reason why whenever we're not feeling well, we're, um, maybe noticing that, you know, our eating habits are worse is because we're getting a short temporary, um, medicine to our pain. But again, I would say it's more anesthesia than a medicine because that pain is still there and we want to address it.
Thank you so much. Thank you. And I guess a, a, a better way to get those endorphins would be to go for a walk or exercise. Great. And Dr. Warner, um, what medications can they use in children to treat COVID if they're hospitalized for COVID?
Um, there aren't any specific medicines used to treat children. You, you're sort of treating the symptoms of what may be occurring. And what they found for children who have had COVID nineteen that has required hospitalization is, um, uh, an entity called, uh, multi-system inflammatory syndrome in children. So you may have seen in the news MIS dash C. Uh, recently they've actually seen it in young adults. So now you'll see MIS dash A. And what it is, it's, it's an individual age less than twenty-one years of age presenting with fever, lab evidence of inflammation, evidence of clinically severe illness requiring hospitalization with multi-system, which means more than two organ involvement. So it can be heart, kidneys, lungs, blood, uh, your GI system, skin or neurological system. Um, no other plausible diagnosis. And then they're positive for a current or a recent COVID nineteen infection. Um, and so you're just treating, uh, another, anybody in medicine, especially pediatricians, know there's something called Kawasaki's disease and it's an inflammatory disease of cardiac system. So those kids have prolonged fever, um, they can have a red rash, they can have cha- chapping of the lips, you know, swollen lymph nodes. But the key thing about Kawasaki's disease is it can cause, um, aneurysms of the coronary arteries to, uh, the kid's hearts. So there's a medicine called immunoglobulin. Um, uh, it's IVIG. So that is used, uh, and steroids are used. There are other biologics that are used, but it's sort of treating the symptoms. It's not specifically treating COVID nineteen. Because there was, uh, emergency use authorization given for medicines. But though, like I said, the, the current studies are geared more towards the adults. Um, so really you're just sort of treating and then for the respiratory illness is just respiratory support. You know, things that, sort of extrapolating things that have worked for other diseases and looking at what's going on at the time and in using them to treat what the children have going on now.
Thank you, Dr. Warner. I'm glad our kids are doing well, doing better than the adults because we just really can symptomatically treat them. Um, Dr. Wallace, so that our kids are not ended up in the hospital. Um, there's a question, how can you prevent COVID nineteen circulation in the classrooms among teachers, you know, adults, as well as the students?
So, um, the key to decreasing
So, the key to decreasing the circulation of COVID-19, we know these things. We want to decrease person-to-person transmission. We want to decrease the risk of the droplets entering your eyes, your nose, your mouth. And so, we know what that is. That's wearing your mask, your face covering. And of course, the face covering that has at least two layers is better than a face covering with just one layer. Physical distancing. So in the classrooms, since this is a classroom question, at least three feet apart. But ideally, they want six feet apart. And this information I got from the AAP, the organization that Dr. Warner spoke about earlier. Hand washing, so having hand washing stations in the classroom or sanitizer stations in the classroom. And the teachers reminding the students often to wash or sanitize their hands. You often have been hearing things about quarreting students, meaning keeping students together in one classroom instead of them moving from classroom to classroom or intermingling the students. Keeping one group together throughout the whole day. That case, if there is a development of a positive, you have less chance of it spreading to other people throughout the school. Staff members, teachers should not congregate together in the break room, the staff room, the lunch room. We tend to let our guard down when we're in those kind of places. We take our mask off, we want to eat. And so, decreasing that in the schools or not even allowing that in the schools will help to decrease the transmission of coronavirus. Of course, disinfecting. We know we got to disinfect. We know we got to disinfect all the high-touch areas, doorknobs and desks and faucet handles and just things that are touched very often. The CDC has a link, I think, to the EPA where you can get a list of the approved items or disinfectants that will, that they have approved that will kill the coronavirus. So I recommend going to the CDC or the EPA's website to get a list of those things so that you'll know. But some of the things listed, ethanol, hydrogen peroxide, ammonia. So if you have disinfectants, they have those things in it, then you should be good. Oh, stay home if you sick. Do not send your kid to school sick. Please don't do that.
Thank you, Dr. Wallace. Thank you. Maybe people will carry that on after we've gotten past COVID. Because I've seen some flu kids sent to school as well. Dr. Powell, Dr. Warner talked about the Pfizer vaccine that has been approved. But could you explain what the difference is between, I think it's AstraZeneca, Moderna, Pfizer, you know, all the different vaccines that are coming to the market?
All right. So description of the vaccine. So I'm just going to review the big, the big three. And I'm going to categorize, I'm going to put the Pfizer vaccine and Moderna in kind of in the same group because they're messenger RNA vaccines. And Dr. Warner had talked about it earlier is that how a messenger RNA vaccine is developed. We shouldn't have, shouldn't be able to get COVID. Because what happens is, is they take a a, the same DNA that's in the virus, they don't actually use it. What they do is they copy it and they actually put it in something called my cell and they put it in the cell. And actually, the, our own cells make a copy of the spikes on the coronavirus. And so, we don't get any live virus, we don't get any attenuated virus, we don't get any dead virus. We don't get any virus at all. So we should not catch COVID from taking these, taking these two vaccines because they're mRNA messenger RNA vaccines. So that's, that's the good thing about it. But what it does is, your body kind of revs itself up. And what I mean is, it practices because it's made a copy or, or it's not the actual, again, it's not the actual virus, but it's made a copy for your body to build up antibodies against. So it's like, if you play any sports, football, basketball, the body is actually practicing before it goes into the game by getting the vaccine. So, so whenever the game starts, whenever we come in contact with the virus, the body already has a built-up immune response and is ready to fight COVID. So that's the good thing about the mRNA virus. And so, now talking about the adenov, talking about AstraZeneca, it uses an adenovirus vector. So what it does is, it uses kind of like an adenovirus that's in monkeys that our body doesn't normally react to. But it sends it in through there and our body doesn't respond, our body takes it up. And then what it does is, it actually does the same thing as the first two virus. It makes another messenger RNA virus. And so really, all three end up working through a messenger RNA is how it works. And again, we should not get COVID from any of the three of these vaccines at all. So the big thing is, is we hear about the, just to talk a little bit about the Pfizer vaccine again is that it requires like ultra-cold temperatures. It only lasts like thirty days in like a regular freezer. But it can last up to six months into the, to the really cold, like, I think it's like minus ninety-four degrees Fahrenheit that they have to store that. But the Moderna is kind of in between. You can store it up in, in a regular refrigerator for like thirty days. Otherwise, it just has to be at freezer, in a standard freezer. And then the AstraZeneca, it can be kept in a standard refrigerator for up to six months. Now, the big thing that you've heard on TV about all three of these vaccines is the efficacy. And the efficacy for the Pfizer and the Moderna vaccine, which is ones that had to be kept colder, are similar. It's ninety-four, ninety-five percent. But with the AstraZeneca vaccine, it's about seventy percent. But that's still, still good if you can prevent having COVID. And so, so that's where the efficacy are on each one. Then with all three, you had to have two shots. For the Pfizer vaccine is two shots, three weeks apart. For the Moderna vaccine is two shots, four weeks apart. And same for the AstraZeneca is two shots, four weeks apart. The thing is, I wish I could show you the kind of the chart that I'm using. Because it seems like I'm kind of going all over the place. But the only one that's been purely reviewed right now is Pfizer. And that's the one that we got the emergency use authorization for, I think it was last night, Dr. Warner was saying. And then, so those are kind of the vaccines in their, their description. Again, Pfizer's the one that, that, that we're going to use. And I think North Carolina is supposed to, supposed to use also is Pfizer. And from what I was reading, they'll use the AstraZeneca in places where refrigeration is harder. So that may be more in our third world countries where they use the AstraZeneca vaccine. But I just want people to know, you should not catch COVID from taking the vaccine. And I'm going to take the vaccine.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing, Dr. Powell. Dr. Hicks, so Dr. Powell's going to take the vaccine. What kind of side effects are or were associated with the vaccine in the trials?
So what I read was for the Pfizer vaccine and the Moderna vaccine, what patients have experienced after vaccination? Fever, chills, muscle pain, headaches. And also some changes in your sensory, like you may have some numbness or tingling or maybe hypersensitivity where something seems like it has a stronger sensation when you touch it than it did before. Also, they said that the symptoms seemed to get worse after the second dose of the vaccine, which is required to get that ninety to ninety-four to ninety-five percent benefit from taking the vaccine and reduce your risk of getting the virus itself. And from what I read about the AstraZeneca vaccine, there was at least one or two cases of a condition called transverse myelitis. This is a condition that affects the spinal cord and the patient may present with weakness. They may lose control of their bladder and bowels. And they also may have changes in their sensory perception. When they touch something, it may feel different or something may feel different on their skin. That was it. I could not find any information about the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine that had been proposed. And they said it may have been because of some legal issues between the participant in the study who had those symptoms and the company itself. So I didn't have anything I could find about that particular vaccine.
Good. Thank you. And those were transient symptoms or that was permanent or?
They did not, the duration of the symptoms. They didn't say how long those symptoms lasted. They didn't give any indication for that. Find it.
So if you're thinking about getting the vaccine, those are some symptoms that may be associated with the vaccine.
And as Dr. Warner stated earlier, those are symptoms that are very similar when you get your flu shot and other vaccinations. Those are not very uncommon from the vaccines that we recommend right now and have been recommending for decades.
Okay. Thank you. That's good information. All right. Perfect. So, Dr. White, we've got the vaccine coming. It looks like there's some light at the end of the tunnel, but we've still been in this thing for nine months. So are there some resources in the community for those who are, you know, they, they know there's some light at the end of the tunnel, but they need some help right now?
Yes, absolutely. So in terms of just, you know, you feel like you want or need a therapist or want to try a therapist, which, I don't know if you guys can see my shirt, but it actually says Jesus and therapy, amen. Because we go to our primary care physician and sometimes we need to go to somebody just to process things out with. And so, there is a website called Psychology Today. And it has a variety, it's just basically a directory of different local therapists. And it's a good directory, particularly if you want to utilize your health insurance for therapy. Now, in terms of accessing mental health services that are free or discounted within Guilford County, actually Guilford and Forsyth County and even Mecklenburg County. There, there are two kind of main agencies. One is called Monarch, that's actually my full-time job where I work. And then Daymark Recovery Services. And they provide a wide range of mental health services for individuals that have private insurance as well as Medicaid or who are uninsured altogether. And when I say wide range, I'm not just talking about where you present to the office for services or where you're receiving services, telehealth, kind of how we're on Zoom. But also services will, where individuals will actually come out to you. Now, now, of course, for you to receive that type of service, you have to be having some, some behaviors that are more escalated, right? But that's certainly available. And then what I will also add to that, 411 is a resource directory. And you, you can literally call, it's like Google, but it's on the phone. So you can call 411 and say, you know, mental health services. Actually, it'll ask you to identify if you're looking for businesses, for government services or for residential information. So you can indicate that and then say mental health services and it'll pull some things up. I also wanted to mention, going back to services that are free or services for individuals that may have Medicaid. Within Guilford County, there's something known as a managed care organization, which essentially, that organization basically regulates services for anybody that is uninsured or has Medicaid for an entire region. And so Guilford County is a part of that and it's called Stan Hills. You can go to their website and there is a whole provider directory about behavioral health, mental health services. For Forsyth County, because I know we have individuals from Kernsville who are on, the name of that managed care organization is called Cardinal Innovations. And again, there is a full provider directory. So there's not a lack of resources. There are certainly resources that are, you know, available. And I'm certainly willing to, you know, assist with possible connection. And the other thing that I would just add to that, a good church, a good pair of shoes, a good man, a good therapist, they're all hard to find. So you may have to be willing to just kind of, you know, you know, try it a few times. Like I just want to put that out there, okay? So if you say, all right, like I want to go, I want to try this, I want to talk to somebody, but I went and it just, it just didn't work out, it's okay. You may have to, you know, continue to persevere in that.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. White, for keeping that all in perspective for us. If at first you don't succeed, try, try again. Is that important? Okay, so, Dr. Warner, a lot of people get these two terms confused and I'm hoping you can help. It says, what's the difference between isolation and quarantine?
Okay, I found a really good, let me see if this works because I am not tech savvy, but let's see. All right, can you all see that? Okay. Let's see. Okay, so quarantine is keeping someone at home who has been in close contact with someone who has COVID-19 away from others. So if you've had close contact with a person, then you stay home until fourteen days after your last contact. You check your temperature twice a day and watch for symptoms of COVID-19. And if possible, stay away from people who are at higher risk for getting very sick from COVID-19. Isolation keeps someone who is sick or tested positive for COVID-19 without symptoms away from others, even in their own home. So if you're sick and think or know you have COVID-19, stay home until after at least ten days of symptoms. Ten days since the symptoms first appeared and at least twenty-four hours with no fever, without fever-reducing medication and symptoms have improved. If you tested positive for COVID-19 but do not have symptoms, stay home until after ten days have passed since your last, since your positive test. And if you live with others, stay in a specific sick room or area and away from other people or animals, including pets, and use a separate bathroom if available. So for, I've had several patients, teenagers, like I said, who have been COVID-19 positive. And they do, their symptoms have been similar to the adults. The younger patients, toddlers, you know, less than five years of age, for some kids, they really have had no symptoms. The older kids were symptomatic, so parents had them tested, you know, hanging out with friends or another exposure. And they've been symptomatic. The biggest have been fever and body ache. So what parents did was, you know, pretty much had them stay in their room, wear their mask pretty much twenty-four seven or keep their door closed. And wear their mask when they had to come out if there wasn't a bathroom that they could isolate them to have them use a separate bathroom away from the rest of the family. If it's not possible, the key thing is that person who is sick really does need to wear their mask when they are in the other parts of the house. But pretty much, they have to, in essence, isolate in their own room, in their own bedroom. And hopefully, the graphic helps.
That is very helpful. That is very helpful.
It's on the CDC website. They have a lot of colorful things like this. And this is actually what my practice has used in terms of putting up signs. But it's great, you know, they've got great stuff for businesses, churches, restaurants or whatever. So these colorful signs, you know, just to give people things that'll catch their eye. You know, because trying to read a lot of words, you know, people will skim over them. But if the pictures are there, it's colorful, you know, they definitely pay attention more.
Agreed. Thank you, Dr. Warner. So, Dr. Wallace, we have a question. You know, many times where their kids, their babies, and the question is, can babies get COVID? And I think this person is really concerned about breastfeeding and they want to know, should they breastfeed if they have COVID?
Very good question. Yes, babies can get COVID. And, and yes, you can breastfeed if you have COVID. And um, and yes, you can breastfeed uh, if you have COVID. Um, some things that you want to do if um, you have COVID um, and you want to breastfeed, um, you need to make sure that you're washing your hands um, before um, picking up the baby. Um, you want to wear a mask when you're breastfeeding. Or anytime you have to have close contact with the, with the newborn or with the infant, you want to wear a mask, you want to wash your hands. Um, if you are pumping, um, you need to um, clean your, your, your pump equipment, wash your pump equipment, um, and wear a mask when you're doing that. For, for mothers who are um, going into the hospital um, to deliver, you uh, will be tested for coronavirus um, upon entering the hospital. Uh, if you are positive for coronavirus, um, you will, they'll, the, the the staff will wear their full P P E uh, in the, in the room. Um, and you will be asked to wear a mask also if you're positive for coronavirus. Your baby um, will be tested. We're testing babies, um, newborns in the hospital at twenty-four hours of life to see if they're positive or not. Uh, if an infant or newborn is positive and they're not exhibited exhibiting any symptoms, we kind of go like normal. Of course, wearing your, your P P E, your, your gloves, your mask, your gown and all that. Um, if, of course, the baby is having symptoms, and that's a whole nother story where they would need to be evaluated by um, the uh, intensive care um, doctors. I hope that answers the question.
Thank you, Dr. Wallace. I believe it does. Thank you. And Dr. Powell, um, you know, and maybe this is a question the pediatricians can chime in on. It says there, um, is being tested, the only way that you have COVID or had Co- Okay, I'm sorry, let me start over. Is being tested the only way to know that you have COVID or that you have had COVID if you don't have symptoms? The reason I said a pediatrician, we know a lot of the kids are asymptomatic, but how do you know if you've had it or, or not? If you are asymptomatic?
Um, right now, w- we're testing uh, to know whether you, you've had COVID or not. Clinically, a lot of time, a lot of providers know when they come in and people tell you the symptoms of the headache. You can say, you know, clinically, you think that they have COVID. Right now, we're going to go into flu season. So it's going to be kind of hard to tell the difference between COVID and, and the flu. Um, so right now, testing is the way to do it. And you know, right now, there's two different tests. You can do a PCR test, which is uh, the, the most accurate. And you can do an antigen, which is, 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 is good. Um, if you really, really have rib ruin, it'll show up positive. Sometimes you get a, uh, a higher false negative or, or net, or negative test uh, with the antigen uh, test. But the PCR is the most accurate. So that's to say, if you have active, again, clinically, doctors can listen to your symptoms and probably say, yeah, they have COVID or not. But the testing is the way to find out if you have the active uh, uh, disease or the active virus right then and there. And then what can you do to find out if you, if you have had COVID? So right now, they're doing uh, antibody testing. And uh, if uh, if your body has, if you've had the infection, uh, usually there's a, a time period about three months. Uh, where antibodies should be formed that says, okay, his body has fought, fought this virus. And that's the other way they can find out, even if you've never had a lot of symptoms, you still can do antibody testing to see if you uh, had the active disease and recovered from. That answer the question?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Powell. But before you leave, we had a question that was put in the chat um, a little early. And maybe you can address this. And it says, do we know how many people have had COVID more than once? Or, you know, you were talking about the testing um, to see if you've had COVID or is there something speaking to if you've had COVID more than once?
They uh, I want to say that there's been a couple known in China, Japan, where people have had it twice. And then there's been one or two here in the States. They're trying to figure out whether they truly had COVID twice or did they have uh, reactivation of um, uh, of their first episode? And actually, that's kind of where we are. We, we kind of had a case similar to that at Novak. Patient was, had been out six weeks and they came back, chest X-ray, everything was worse. And then uh, and so the, they're trying to figure out, you know, is this a, a second? Their COVID test was positive and is this a second infection or is this just reactivation of what they had? And right now, this, this, this uh, virus is so novel. Um, I, I think there have been some reported cases of people getting it two times. But right now, we're, we're not for sure. It's going to take some more research and um, yeah, more clinical trials to, to find out because it's such a novel um, virus.
Can I comment?
Yes, please.
So, one thing um, with the um, testing and knowing if you have COVID, oftentimes as pediatricians, sometimes the parents will bring the kid in just to kind of surveil, surveillance for the whole household, like, you know. The kid is sick, but the rest of the household has this, so tell me what the kid has, so I can know what the rest of the household has. And so I try to encourage them that they need to go to their own doctors, um, get tested. I let them know about the community, um, places where they can be tested, um, the drive-through areas to be tested. But I, I had a patient, a mom, um, who delivered, who was tested positive twice for COVID um, several months apart, I think like four or five months apart. And the infectious disease said to consider that as a second infection. Um, so I don't know how many of those are out there, but I guess it's a possibility, uh, which also speaks to the fact that, you know, we need this vaccine. Um, because maybe the immunity doesn't last as long as, as they think it will last for.
Thank you, Dr. Wallace. Thank you, Dr. Powell. And uh, Dr. Wallace, we had a question come in the chat, which you were just talking about immunity, so maybe you can address this. And it says, should I wait for her immunity rather than get the vaccine? Since, I mean, okay. Well, that was short.
It'll take forever if we wait for her immunity. Uh, I didn't do any research on that. I just know.
No, what I read last night, even for the vaccine, they are not sure how long, that uh, you know, because they've had to come up with it. And because they had to come up with it so quickly, does not mean they skip steps in regards to safety. But what they do know, what they don't know is how long the vaccine itself is going to last. Um, but they do know there needs to be two doses, you know. They're just, they just don't have enough numbers yet to see how long the immunity to the vaccine is going to last right now.
Correct. Um, my research found that they think that it may be like an annual vaccine, such as we do with our flu shot, but they're not a hundred percent sure.
Thank you all for chiming in. And as we go through the chats, uh, please, everybody fight for the mic. Okay, so I have one that's a little longer that I'm going to reach to you. So just um, stay with me here and my, and my old eyes. And it says, um, can one of the panelists address the long haul in quotation syndrome effects from COVID nineteen that some patients are experiencing? And why they, uh, and why these cocktails, in parentheses again, of quotation marks, um, that the elite are receiving and seem to be recovering sooner? And why it's not available to the general public? So um, to kind of do a Cliff's Notes version of that question again is, you know, there's some long haul um, syndrome and, and, and side effects from having COVID. And the general public's not receiving the same cocktails that some of the, you know, more prominent known people are receiving. So if someone could please address that it's not available to just the general public.
Alright, I, I'll start and then they can come and come help in. There wasn't a fight for the mic. But um, the long haul stuff is kind of, uh, what we read about is like COVID fall. People having difficulty concentrating, they can have numbness in, in uh, in, in limbs. And uh, they can have continued headaches and, and uh, so they still kind of have these symptoms even after they have recovered and, and they're not spreading, you know, able to, you know, transmit COVID to others anymore. They're still having these uh, symptoms. And then as far as the um, the cocktail that the elite are getting, really the only, eh, the cocktail that most people are getting now are Decadron, uh, Remdesivir. They've had really sick people get convalescent plasma. But uh, Regeneron is the uh, only thing that, that uh, the, the president and I guess the elites got that other people didn't get. But the problem with that, that study was so small, there's really only maybe a hundred and seventy-five, two hundred people that was in the study, uh, to say it was safe, you know, to use when, whenever the president got it. And then there were some, also some um, um, ethical things because uh, it, it was used from fetal cells. So they hadn't been widespread because they're still trying to go through the ethical part of it. And then it was such a small study. We really don't know if it really worked or not in reading it. So, you know, they got this cocktail, was it the Regeneron that worked? Was it the Decadron that worked? Was it the Remdesivir that worked? Was it the convalescent plas- plasma that worked? It's, it's just hard to say. And so Regeneron has been studied less than anyone else. And so it's not, it's not been used at our hospital anyway. Maybe used at Moses' tone, but I, I know it's not used at, at Forsyth.
Thank you, Dr. Powell. And as you mentioned, some of those medications, someone asked, how long is a person contagious after receiving Remdesivir? I think that's for you, Dr. Powell.
Oh, that's for me?
Yes.
Okay, but getting uh, Remdesivir, someone had already talked about it before, it can be up to six weeks. But i- it's not really when you get the uh, Remdesivir, it's really when your symptoms start. It can be any, anywhere from ten days after symptoms start. If you're really sick, it can be twenty days. If you're intubated on, on a uh, ventilator, it could be thirty days. So i- it's really not when you got the Remdesivir, it's usually from the time you got the symptoms and how severe the symptoms were. So usually people that get Remdesivir are at least moderately sick. They're requiring six liters of oxygen to get Rem- Remdesivir. So I, I would say twenty days to be safe.
And I think a follow-up question to that is, when should you retest?
Well, well now, the, the CDC kind of changed their, their um, their guidelines. Now, they're saying that actually now you don't really even have to, to, to retest. But I know most of our infectious disease doctors are, are re- retesting uh, uh, folks. You know, even before they go. Usually you want to make sure that you, you retest anywhere from six to, six weeks to three months after you initially had your, had your symptoms. And again, that depends on how sick you were, who your infectious disease or critical care doctor. They're gonna, they're gonna guide that. And that's going to vary depending on the uh, intensity of your, your illness with COVID.
And that, Dr. Powell, I think is referring to people who have been admitted for retesting. For the general population who they've not been admitted into the hospital, I don't think there is a recommendation.
No, it's not.
For people who did not need to be admitted.
Right. They're actually saying, if you know, if, if you don't have to come into a hospital, you don't really have to retest. That's what they're saying. I'm just telling what they're doing in, in, in the hospital. But yeah, for people that don't, they're not sick enough to get admitted, they're not saying retest.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Powell. Um, another question that came in, and I'm going to shoot this to Dr. White, is um, how do we keep children and adults motivated and hopeful? And I'm going to let that be our last question and then we'll have Dr. Powell um, close us out in prayer. Because the, you know, the purpose of this town hall and, and the key image was hope, you know. As we come to the, toward the end of this nine months and we see that there's um, some light in the future, some, some promise in the future. So uh, I'd like Dr. White to finish with our last question and then uh, um, Dr. Powell to, to pray us out of this town hall.
Yeah, so I would say two things that can really help us with staying motivated and hopeful. The first being, guard your heart. We need to guard our heart in terms of things that just don't help us to feel better. That may be watching the news. Like I know for myself, I literally watch the news two days a week because I realized I was feeling more anxious, just having it on every day. Um, you may need to mute some of the people that you follow on social media, right? Like if they're just giving crazy updates, it's not lifting your spirit, it's not feeling you up. You may just need to get off of social media for a season altogether. Um, so guard your heart in terms of identifying the things or the people in your life, the things that you're exposed to that really just um, create some dissonance for you. Meaning it's not causing you to feel better. And then I'm going back to my word for the day, be intentional about feeling up, right? Be intentional about saying, okay, you know what, I really don't feel like getting on this Zoom, but I know it's going to be good for me. So I'm going to plan to get on it. Be intentional about what you're eating and saying, you know what? If I have this two liter soda in my house, I probably will drink it. And I know that's not helpful for me, so I'm not going to purchase that. Be intentional about what you're listening to. Faith comes by hearing, right? Um, and I, again, I just go back to the news, I go back to people. Um, you know, we're so blessed that our ministry is readily available, right? On the internet, on YouTube, there are other men and women of God. Um, be intentional about having a daily prayer time. Be intentional about checking in on your loved ones and speaking life, right? Um, like one of the things that I do every day, I try to identify, what is something good that happened today? What is a blessing today, right? Maybe I got two extra fries in the drive-thru. Thank you, Jesus, I'm thankful, right? So it's like, be intentional, laugh, right? Find opportunities, reframe your wins. Another thing that, that I did not mention, um, but our church has a lot of resources, you all. We have the Community Information Link Ministry that can connect you to things. And then beginning twenty twenty-one, we're actually launching a youth counseling ministry to help our young people deal with some of these issues. So guard your heart and be intentional.
Thank you so much, Dr. White. And I want to, I see people leaving. I want to thank all the panelists for coming on and sharing your wisdom and your insight in every day. And um, please don't leave before the benediction. And we got, we have lots of kudos over in the chat. Just thanking everyone for sharing this information. And I did want to share that before Dr. Powell closes us out in prayer. Dr. Powell, you are muted, Dr. Powell. Thank you.
I just want to thank all the panelists again. Uh, I want to thank every, all the people that participated. And uh, we pray that uh, you got some information you could use and to encourage you. Now, I just want to close out in a short word of prayer. Father God, we just thank you for being in the midst. We thank you for having your way. We thank you for the Spirit of Excellence and our moderator and our panelist, Father. Father, again, we thank you for our, our home church and our senior pastor, Michael Thomas, who uh, equips us and uh, who educates us, Father. We actually continue to put a hand of protection around all the members of Love and Faith, all the participants. Uh, Father, I ask that you just continue to build a healthy protection, protect them from the coronavirus, Father. Anybody that's been affected by any illnesses, Father. We pray healing into their lives right now, Father. Father, we ask for uh, stable minds, Father. We ask for focus uh, in the lives of everyone that participated. We ask for focus in the lives of everyone that participated and their family members, Father. Anyone that's lost, not just physical life, but just lost their routine, Father. We ask that you just bring them comfort. We ask that you just bring them peace, Father. Father, we ask that you just continue to be with the Health and Wellness Ministry. Father, I ask that you just continue to let us minister in a way that brings you glory and honor, Father. I just want to pray for our frontline workers, keep them safe, Father. We pray for the scientists with this vaccine, Father, that it works and that it can stop this pandemic, Father. But most of all, we just want to turn our face from you and repent of our sins, Father, because that's the real cure, is to look toward you. You are the author and finisher of our faith, Father. You are the beginning and the end. And we love you and we thank you. In our son, Jesus' name, we pray. Amen.
Amen, amen. Thank you so much, Dr. Powell. And thank you again, all you panelists. Thank you, everyone, for attending. Have a great day.